Alright, the time has come to pass, you know, time has come and for the November 6th, 2017, Rep. Council Meeting. Uh, roll call please.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Valco.
Present.
Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Seager.
Present.
Alderman Moseo.
Present.
Alderman Villalobos.
Present.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Mayor Cunningham.
Present. Uh, uh, would ask Reverend Eileen Roberts from Christ Episcopal Church to please join us at, at the podium in immediately following, uh, I'm sorry, for the invocation and immediately following that will be the pledge of allegiance. Please. Please stand, I'm sorry, please stand.
Thank you. On this day, just after one of the worst shootings in our country that is so recent after the last one just weeks ago, when people are afraid to assemble publicly for prayer and for anything else, we ask God's blessing upon us. We ask you, Lord, to teach your people to rely on your strength and to accept responsibilities to their fellow citizens, that we may continue to recognize and follow trustworthy leaders and make wise decisions for the well-being of our society and all its people, that we may continue to serve you faithfully in our generation. We ask also, Heavenly Father, that you bless all those before us, our mayor, our aldermen, and all who serve this city, that the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice with steadfast purpose may give them the strength to faithfully serve in their offices and to promote the well-being of all people. We give you thanks, oh God, our Creator. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Eileen Channelie Roberts from Christ Episcopal Church located at Porton Grand Avenue, Waukegan, Illinois. Mayor's comments. This morning, I helped kick off a shoreline study with the partnership of Larson Marine, National Gypsum, U.S. Army Corps Engineers, Illinois Department of Natural Resources, and Waukegan Port District for our harbor. This study will work to find a sustainable solution to the longstanding shoring facing Waukegan Harbor and the surrounding shorelines. Leaf collections, leaf collection continues through November. Again, leaves must be right onto the parkway, not the street for pickup. Schedules for leaf collections by ward are available here in City Hall or also on the website. For the week of November 7th through the 9th, the following wards, uh, leaf, leaf collection will be in the following wards. November 7th, 7th and 8th wards. November 8th, 5th and 6th wards. November 9th, 5th and 6th wards. Have any questions, please feel free to call the Waukegan Public Works Department. At eight four seven three six zero zero nine four four. Again, eight four seven three six zero zero nine four four. Thank you Alderman Tempest. Last month, city staff and I joined Congressman Brad Schneider at the Genesee Theater for a naturalization ceremony for 291 individuals. This was an overwhelmingly experience to speak to 291 enthusiastic people who have worked and studied and now were realizing their dream of officially becoming American citizens. I shared this experience with everyone because I hope that people continue to think of Waukegan as a diverse and welcoming city. The city is working with cool ministries to supply personal items for veterans in need. We have a bin right here in front and will be located outside of the mayor's office after council meeting. Donations will also be welcomed at Veterans Day, at the Veterans Day Ceremony. Lists are available online or next to the box. Please, let's support our veterans. Uh, myself and I think some aldermen have already started some donations, but before council meeting, we all will, uh, put our, our items in the box. And again, we welcome all of you to come in throughout the week, uh, right outside the mayor's office. City of Waukegan is a Toys for Tots drop-off site. There is a bin in the main lobby on the first floor. New and unwrapped toys are welcome and greatly appreciated. So let's make this holiday season special for all kids in need. Upcoming events. Veterans Day Parade and Ceremony is this Saturday, November 11th. The parade steps off at the corner of Grand Avenue with Genesee Street at 10:30 a.m. November 11th, which will be this Saturday, November 11th, and we're gonna step off at the corner of Grant and Genesee, uh, at 10:30 a.m., uh, tip, uh, for everyone us by the Ace Hardware Store. Walking to Veterans Memorial Plaza at West and Washington Street where the ceremony will begin at 11:11 a.m. Waukegan Park District's annual Turkey Trot is at Belvedere Park on Saturday, November 11th. All ages are welcome and the entry fee is two cans of non-perishable food. Parents should be happy about that. The City of Waukegan's Chamber of Commerce hosts its quarterly Wake Up with Waukegan Breakfast, and the speaker will be Mr. Damar Harris, who is the Program Director for Lake County Workforce Development. This will happen on Tuesday, November 14th, at the Belvedere Rec Center, AKA known as Belvedere Park. Genesee Theater, the Genesee Theater has some great shows coming in November. The Brian Seltzer Orchestra Christmas Rocks Tour, Alton Brown Live, Jeff, Jeff, Jeffrey Osborne, and R.E.O. Speed, Speedwagon are just some of the great upcoming acts. Check out the schedules on the Waukegan Genesee Theater website or buy tickets today or as soon as you can. Thank you. Next on the agenda. Motion by Alderman Moseo, second by Alderman Tempest, to approve regular meeting, meeting minutes from October 16th, 2017. Are there any questions to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Audience time. Madam Clerk. Oh, I'm sorry, we need to step back one second. We have some appreciations. Thank you. During our, there's a couple of events that we had, during Zombie Walk, we had some awesome volunteers who helped us out. Alright? And we would like to, uh, bring them up for, uh, for special certificate of appreciation. I'm gonna say both of your names, I'm gonna read, uh, what's on them, and then I'll come up and present, come around and present them to you. Is alright gentlemen? Alright. The City of Waukegan does hereby present Jose Lamon this certificate of appreciation for providing a free performance. I'm gonna repeat that again, for providing a free performance of the Audio Beam in the Jack Benny Plaza during the 7th Annual Zombie Walk on Saturday, October 21st, 2017, in downtown Waukegan, Illinois, presented on November 6th, 2017. The next, Mr. Ryan Swift. City of Waukegan does hereby present this certificate of appreciation for, for providing a free performance of Auto Beam in the Jack Benny Plaza Center during the 7th Annual Za, Za, Zombie Walk on Saturday, October 21st, 2017, in downtown Waukegan, Illinois, presented on November 6th, 2017. Let's give it up for these two gentlemen for their time. Face the camera guys. Face the camera.
This is Jose. And this is Ryan. I think, if Ryan had a place here, he's gonna take a photo. Thank you very much for your help, really appreciate that.
There were two other names who helped, it was DJ Kampa Chu and Royal Sounds were also willing to thank you for their appreciation. Alright, and with that being said, now is audience time. Madam Clerk.
Art Cobb. Three minutes unless you bought, uh, something for the vets.
Good evening, Mayor Cunningham, council members and audience. Waukegan Main Street is hosting Day Two of the 2017 Community Transformation Workshop, Thursday, November 16th, at the City Hall Council Chambers from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00. My Main Street colleagues from around the coun, uh, country will engage in professional development with National Main Street Refresh Program representatives. I invite the council members and the staff of the Community Development Block Grant and Planning and Zoning to join us and the mayor for coffee and donuts in the chambers at 9:00 a.m., lunch at 12:15 at 17 North, or networking at 4:00 p.m., again, at 17 North. Before you, you have an agenda, please contact me with any questions. My office number is eight four seven six two three six six five zero. Thank you.
Thank you Art. Dulce Ortiz.
Uh, good evening, Mayor Cunningham and members of the City Council. My name is Dulce Ortiz, and in addition to being a resident of the 4th Ward, I'm also one of the founders and co-chairs of the grassroots Clean Power Lake County Campaign. So we're living in a time where our federal and state government is failing to protect us, whether it's immigration rights, women's rights, health, and environmental rights. It's as if we're living in some dystopian world where President Trump and Governor Warner are purposefully appointing people who are disastrous to the agencies to which they were appointed to. This is important in setting up the context for the following update I'm going to share, since any criticism about Energy, Energy's coal plant in Waukegan is often met with the soundbite from their spokesperson about how they are in compliance with U.S. and Illinois EPA laws. Our very own Waukegan Coal Plant owned by Energy, Energy currently has a case before the Illinois Pollution Control Board alleging violations of state groundwater standards caused by coal ash at all four Energy Coal Plants. So not just in Waukegan, but also in Romeoville, Joliet, and Pecking. There was a five-day hearing that went from October 23rd to October 28th, which has been extended. The case will not conclude with an immediate decision, and it will likely take at least another six months for a liability phase decision from the Pollution Control Board. Should the board find Energy liable, the remedy phase of litigation will proceed and a remedy addressing the risky and antiquated coal ash handling practices will be proposed. As President Trump and EPA Administrator Pruitt work to reveal, repeal Obama's Clean Power Plan, Governor Warner has also shifted regulations to favor big polluters over the people of Illinois. Closed ordeal makings where polluters themselves are put in charge of protecting the public from harmful pollution is dangerous for everyone. Companies like Energy have already failed to protect our communities from the toxic leaching into our groundwater from surrounding coal ash dumping. At every single one of Energy's plants, their mishandling of the toxic waste has resulted in self-reported contamination. These chemicals flow into nearby waterways near beaches and other recreation areas. Illinois has a dire coal ash problem, and without adequate protection from Governor Warner's state agencies and lack of strong laws at the federal and state level, communities across the state like Waukegan will continue to be at serious risk and saddled with the economic burden of this toxic waste. So we are left to look at our municipal leaders to protect us from the gross negligence of corporate polluters. So I'm gonna go off script and just let you know that I pray for you guys. I pray because you have to make very difficult decisions that they're not gonna please everyone in the public, right? But I pray that we're able to work together to protect the health of our communities.
Thank you Dulce. Mary Blair Moore.
Good evening. My name is Mary Blair Moore, a resident of the 6th Ward, former member of Citizens for Progress, and a current student of the Citizens Police Academy. Mayor, I rise this evening to offer clarity to my comments at the last council meeting and to address comments made by you. First, my remarks were not driven by or so much about Reverend Rick Harris than they were about the services he's offered this community and the need for us residents to have his presence at City Hall. While you claim Human Resources can handle diversity and employee complaints, I believe the water plant employees and others within the City Hall will tell you that they appreciate having his presence here as well. But to be clear, my comments were more so about you. I've known you most of your life and your mother's a friend of mine. You and I have spoken privately, where I advised and you agreed to leave the Chief Diversity Office intact. I feel that Mr. Harris, having been an ordained clergy for over 25 years and an executive, I'm sorry, for 35 years, has certainly earned the title of Reverend or Mr. Harris. Needless to say, I hear him called Ricky quite often, uh, and I think it's inappropriate. We both know that Mr. Harris does not need me or anyone to beg for a city contract for him. He is a benevolent man and will, will probably give away more time and treasure than either of us will make this whole entire year. That being said, to be clear, I did not get his permission to speak last time, and I'm sure your concern has not stopped me from speaking tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Cassia Kanjaki.
Hi, my name is Kasia, and I'm a resident of the 7th Ward under Lisa May, and I wanted to bring up two topics tonight. Switchlands held a community forum at Christian Faith Fellowship Church this past Saturday. I am an atheist with plenty of things to do with them. Um, I wanted to let you know I brought my kids also. Your children are always welcome at any community forum, just in case anybody's wondering.
Could you speak up just a little bit?
Oh, do you? You know what? I'm tall. I keep forgetting this. I'm tall, I need to, I need to. We went because of last week's shooting of two middle schoolers who go to school with my older daughter at Thomas Jefferson. The panel consisted of the county sheriff, our police chief, the chief from the county jail, a community outreach coordinator, a county board member, and two attorneys. These are the exact people that we should be speaking to about something like two preteens being shot. In attendance were about 30 Waukegan residents, two school board members, a local rapper and entrepreneur, and four out-of-town moms who are working as volunteers, um, for Moms' Demand Action to try and prevent more senseless gun violence. Our mayor also came as well after another engagement that he had prior. More events like this will be held in the future, and I'm not affiliated with Switchlands, but I really think that this was a great event, and I would love to see all of you there. And if you're interested, I do have their contact information, anybody, council, audience, and I'd be willing to pass your information over onto them. I am disappointed in how low the turnout was and how massive of a sense of apathy I'm seeing from the community about something like children being gunned down, and I would like to call out the people who are the loudest in my community that perhaps you could reflect on why you weren't there as well. So I know I'm loud and obnoxious and whatever. The other thing is the roads. I drive every day for over a year now up Green Bay, and I turn right onto Grand to get my child from our state-of-the-art fieldhouse. From Green Bay to Baldwin, I count 22 massive bumps that are basically speed bumps and cause me to drive well below the speed limit. From there, I go onto Lewis, and this entire trip takes me past countless car dealerships, auto repair shops, auto insurance companies, and a car wash. You guys getting a trend here? Car stuff, because our cars are breaking down in the city because the roads are terrible. Can we please address this? I know that the city doesn't have a lot of money, I know this, I really do, but you know what, our residents also can't keep buying new cars and getting their transmissions repaired and everything else because of the roads. When a bump is the size of a speed bump and you cannot safely go up the road at the supposed speed limit, that is depressing. It's just depressing and it's embarrassing. So can, can we start working on this? I know not all the streets are Waukegan's responsibility.
Thank you Kasia. Randy Sobeki.
Hello Mayor, council members and audience. I'm here for kinda the same reason, uh, violence going on in our city, uh, mainly with juveniles. I talked to Sam, uh, mayor today and police chief. Uh, my son, last week, was assaulted by three other juveniles walking home from school, no reason was given. I took pictures of them, students, two of the students were disciplined through the schools, suspended for three days, which I find hard-bearing, that he had to go through something like this, and he feels the one victimized. Um, Sam, uh, told me today and the chief, you know, we do have a system that works towards slow, but it does work well. Someone needs to hit play button and fast forward because it's not fair to the victims who are the ones that are treated bad, like they've done something wrong. Well, we let these juveniles get a slap on the wrist and get three-day suspension, but they can go around terrorizing and tearing up our city as tax-aided that we have to pay for to get fixed, and nobody wants to do anything about it. And it's not fair to the victims that have to go through it, and they're the ones that don't get no support for it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. That concludes the audience time.
Resolutions, proclamations, uh, presentation by James Bonneville of Min, Monaco. Do we need to? No, we can probably see. We can probably see. Go ahead James.
Maybe, maybe not.
Mr. Mayor, Alders, by James Bonneville of Municipal Code. Um, Smith, the mayor at the, uh, I don't know what municipal, he asked me to come here today, just kinda talk a little bit about the code online, some of the features that may be beneficial not only to the council but to his constituents at large. Um, this is the code online, where citizens or anybody, staff, whoever it may be, can access that at any given time period, not only from your website, but also from our library on our website itself. So over here on the left-hand side is the ordinances themselves broken out, just by tapping on them. If you wanna do a quick search, go up to the search queue, and let's put the word like water, and I can go in and search down the entire way. You can have it broken out by individual chapters too as well, so we can find exactly what we're looking for. Oh, you got it. But the one aspect is a new feature set we've added to the code online itself, and that is the language translation. There's, uh, we've added Google Translate to integrate with the code itself, so we can actually, for those non-native speakers, can actually find what is going on within the code itself. So we'll just implement Spanish here. That's pretty dope actually. Somehow the... Yeah, it's not clicking for me here. Yeah, it's not clicking, but everything translates into Spanish once you do that. You can automatically go back to English at any given point, but it provides about 99 different languages out there for any non-native speakers, so they can understand and get better transparency into what's happening here at City Hall itself. I wanna give you just a high-level overview of really what the code online can do, not only from a laptop perspective, but also from a mobile device perspective, since some groups, especially Latino communities, use the, their cell phone as a way of looking up things on the internet. The mobile-friendly capability understands what type of device it is and fits the code online to that screen itself. So, thank you for having me here today. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them for you.
Well, well, thank you, thank you very much for that brief, and I think it's, it is so important sometimes throughout the day, particularly in our clerk's office in Alderman, we get questions about certain ordinances and can we get a copy of them? What we're trying to do is make sure all of these, these items are very transparent and you're able to obtain them sometimes without even calling up. So, uh, and we, we really thought this was important for people to know that a lot of the information you have about your city is already online. Alright? Thank you David, did you have anything?
Yes sir, I'm gonna take the EVOA.
Oh, can I take the head? Alright. Uh, well, thank you very much sir for showing up tonight, I really appreciate this.
Thank you.
Item B, recognitions for the ROTC cadets for Waukegan High School, and I ask Mr. Granger to please step to the podium.
Good evening, my name is Tom Granger from the Waukegan Cares Foundation, and over the years I've had the opportunity to work with Mayor Alderman and the mayor on projects that were sponsored by the Waukegan Cares Foundation. And one of those projects was right around a year ago, I think everybody up here was in attendance, we gave five lifetime achievements awards to five Waukegan residents that went off, served their country, came back, and served the community. And to start that ceremony, we had the Waukegan ROTC present the colors, and they did a great job. After the event, the mayor and I were talking, and, you know, he, he mentioned that when we were there, Alderman May, Alderman Moseo, when you said Waukegan east or west, it didn't matter, it was positive. And every time you opened a paper, you saw your classmates being recognized for this or that, and we don't see that as much. So, the mayor told me that if he became, he was Alderman Cunningham then, and he said if I become mayor, he says, for Veterans Day, not only do I want to recognize the veterans, but I wanna honor our future veterans, give them the recognition they deserve. So, that's why we're here tonight. We have eight young men and women, I'm calling them kids to me, but commitment to the service, they're men and women, that have dedicated the next few years, instead of partying with their friends like many high school graduates do, they've dedicated themselves to serving our country and protecting our freedom. And I wanna thank them for that. Mayor could step forward. Chief, Chief Miss Wallace, who is a veteran of the U.S. Army, and Chris Harris, who sits on the board of the Waukegan Cares Foundation. And before we get to the young men and women, uh, we would be remis- And before we get to the young men and women, we would be remiss if we didn't acknowledge the leadership that they received from this program. I've only known Major Carter Bell for a short period, but during that time, every time I talk to him, I hear the passion and the commitment that he has for the program. Major Bell has served twenty years in the U.S. Army, retired, and for the last nineteen years has either been a part of the ROTC program or in charge of it. And so, we have a plaque, I'll read it for you guys. Presented to Major Carter Bell, the Waukegan Cares Foundation, Mayor Sam Cunningham, salute you for your faithful, loyal, and notorious service to both our nation and for training our future servicemen and women. Your impact will never be forgotten.
Major Bell, you're a Waukegan grad, too, are you not? What class? Seventy-four. That's right.
Let's go over here, we want to take one right here in front of the Waukegan. I'm in the Army. He's as good as it gets. Good man. Good man. Want to say something, sir? Oh, you know what? No, not at this time.
That's a first.
And then for the young men and women, they're receiving certificates for the city. Waukegan salutes our military recruits, certificate of recognition presented to them for honorably joining the United States Army or Marines. We have representatives for both here, to protect our country, our citizens, our way of life, and our freedom. First, we have U.S. Army Alejandro Figueroa. So you're coming up too good. This is going to be your guys' man. That's why I gave up my nail molding job. Next, we have Rafael Morales. For United States Marine Corps, we have Jonathan Escobar. Hiram Ocampo. Javier Real. Evian Rodriguez.
Behind you.
Taisha Rush. And last, we have Jalen Sanders. And Mayor, I think David and Jane want to take a picture of everybody together.
You know, before we do this, it's so often that we hear about our kids on the negative, but we don't hear about these young men and young ladies when they do something. Not only the I, and I think all the Alderman, I know we have former teachers up here, Greg, we were just talking earlier, here are some young men and young ladies who are committing themselves to the freedom of our country. We want to start honoring them, so you can get and let you know that we appreciate what you're doing and we thank you, and so others will be inspired to come up and come to this new house and bring your families and be an inspiration of them to do the same. So thank you very, very much. We appreciate you, and you make Waukegan proud, as you already have. Take care, Governor.
Hey, guys, can we do something else? I'd like to put Alderman to join. Alderman, can you all join us, everybody, please? Can the Alderman stand up on this? Up here, and make yourself visible at the top row. This is a Waukegan entire event. Families, families, I know you're very proud of your young men and young ladies. Very, very proud. All right, this is a flashbang. Okay, one, two, three, smile. This is my stuff, man. Is that it? One more? Great, I like that. Congratulations, guys.
All right. Now, wasn't that awesome, everybody? Wasn't that awesome for our young men and young ladies?
Yes.
All right, yeah, give it up one more time. All right. Item C. Gentlemen, if you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. If not, yeah, I know you're probably going to go home. It's okay, no problem. Yeah, Alderman, just like a mouse, get ready for school. All right. Item C, motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Moiseo, motion to adopt as presented a resolution in support of Illinois bicentennial celebration. Want to read the motion?
Resolution seventeen R eighty-three, resolution in support of Illinois bicentennial celebration, whereas August twenty-sixth, twenty eighteen, will mark the two-hundredth anniversary of the adoption of the Illinois Constitution of eighteen eighteen at the Cascasquia Convention, and whereas December third, twenty eighteen, will mark the two-hundredth anniversary of the admission of Illinois to the Union as a state, and whereas the bicentennial of our statehood is an opportunity to recognize and celebrate the many cultural, economic, academic, and political contributions that Illinois and its residents have made to the nation and the world, and whereas commemorations and celebrations will enable and encourage Illinoisans of all ages and backgrounds, together with visitors, to experience Illinois's one thousand two hundred and ninety-eight cities, villages, and towns, thereby stimulating the Illinois economy, and whereas our community recognizes the importance of the bicentennial celebration as a way to honor the citizens and the history of our great state and set a course for success over our next two hundred years, and whereas our community, through its various councils, committees, and congregations, should work together with the Illinois Bicentennial Commission and the state citizens, businesses, and cultural and educational institutions to share our vision and projects to mark the two-hundredth anniversary, and whereas participation in Illinois' bicentennial celebration is a unique opportunity to honor and showcase the state during this historic time, and therefore, be it resolved that Mayor Cunningham and members of the City Council of Waukegan, Illinois, do hereby endorse the efforts of the Illinois Bicentennial Commission in promoting, planning, and executing historic, educational, celebratory, and cultural initiatives, and further resolves to recognize and celebrate the bicentennial of the state of Illinois, and be it further resolved that a suitably embossed copy of this resolution, signed by the mayor and city clerk, be presented and read into public record at the city council meeting the sixth day of November twenty seventeen.
Any questions to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion is passed and carried. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item D, motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Villalobos, to ratify appointments to Stakeholders' Participation Panel, CDBG, Community Development Block Grant. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is passed and carried. Motion to ratify appointment to Library Board, motion... I'm sorry.
Don't you have the people? I think the people are in the audience for the CDBG.
I am so sorry. That's what happens when you get on the script. The Stakeholder's Participation Panel, those who are being appointed, please stand. Well, thank you very much, ladies, and I apologize. Thank you, thank you. That's what happens when it's on hand, it's on the script, you just follow it. It didn't happen in the news, but thank you very much for doing what you do, and that Community Development Block Grant, that panel serves as a special, special recognition for giving dollars from the federal government through the city of Waukegan for programs that are going through this community, and what you do is going to be very, very important. At some point, you're going to be up here, devoting out dollars to those organizations who you think would best serve our community. That's going to be difficult, but I know both of you know who I know you are, you're ready for the challenge. Thank you very much again. Take care, God bless. Item D, correction, item E, motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Bolton, to ratify the appointment of the Library Board, and I think he's here, Mr. Larry McShane, please stand. Larry McShane will be a new appointee on our Library Board. Are there any questions to the motion? Roll call, please. I'm sorry. Yeah, I mean, the motion.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
I have a quick question, actually. Corporation Council, should I vote this now? I abstained from the last one because I was still technically on the board. Seeing as this next one coming up is changing my position, would it be pardon... Would it be pardon for me?
They're still on the board until the next one.
Okay. I just want to make sure there's no conflict of interest there. All right, aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
All right. Yes. Yes, yeah. Rachel, we appointed this young lady at a last council meeting, however she was working, so, and she was not able to make it, but tonight, Ms. Rachel Mendez is also a member of our Waukegan Library Board. Please stand up, Rachel, so everybody can see you. A current educator in Waukegan. Thank you very much. Thank you, and Larry, Larry, you get to meet her, she get to meet you for the first time. Look forward for guys doing some great things on our Library Board. Item F, motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Moiseo, to approve the resolution to appoint Alderman David Villalobos as a non-voting liaison to the Board of Trustees for the Waukegan Library Board. Any questions to the motion? Could we just roll call or just voice? Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Abstain.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Motion is passed and carried. Item V, Public Safety Committee, Alderman Moiseo.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item A, motion authorize the proper city officials to accept the lowest responsible code and purchase a fire hose from municipal emergency services for an amount not to exceed twenty-eight thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars and ninety-five cents, with the city portion not to exceed two thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars and twenty cents payment for the purchase will be made from line item one hundred three oh two oh two four four one two, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Velco. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
And item B, motion to authorize the proper city officials to enter into a private property parking enforcement agreement with Village Park Apartments, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Newsom. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Motion is passed and carried. Insurance Committee, Alderman Taylor.
Thank you, Your Honor. A motion to approve, sorry, a motion authorizing the proper city officials to settle fire department workman's compensation claim, C, or six four five dash one seven dash one zero two eight zero dash zero one, for an amount not to exceed fifty-six thousand six hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty cents, and I so move.
The motion, Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Seager. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
The motion is passed and carried. Special Finance Committee, Alderman Velco.
Thank you. The committee this evening, sir, voted to approve a resolution to apply for the United States Environmental Protection Agency Brownfield Assessment Coalition Grant Application. And what the resolution does, it affirms that the city of Waukegan is a collaborative partner in the Lake County Brownfield Coalition and supports the development and submission of an application in the Environmental Protection Agency Brownfield Assessment Grant Program in the amount of six hundred thousand dollars by Lake County on behalf of the Lake County Brownfield Coalition. Alderman and Mayor, this costs us nothing. This is, they've already made the application, and I so move, sir.
Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Bolton. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Item seven, Judiciary Committee, Alderman May.
Thank you, Mayor. Our first item tonight is I make a motion to adopt an ordinance adopting a six-month moratorium on the new video gaming licenses for the purpose of drafting comprehensive video gaming regulations. We had some discussion, the city with the Home Rule Powers, we want to use our power to regulate the video licenses. I think there's a lot of people in the city who feel we have a giant influx of these type of licenses, and this will cause us to take a look at how we're issuing these licenses and use our Home Rule Authority to make more thoughtful decisions on these licenses, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Newsom. Are there questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
The motion is passed and carried.
Next motion to approve a resolution appointing Martin Walker as our adjudication officer, and I so move.
The motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Newsom. Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Bolton. Are there any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
All right, motion is passed and carried. And in the audience, we do have attorney Martin Walker. You'd like to please stand, sir. Everybody take a look at you. All right, thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you for your service to our community.
Next, item C, is a motion to approve a resolution approving the sale of 13 North Genesee to the Greater Waukegan Development Corporation, and I so move.
A motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Mozio. Are there any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Motion is passed and carried.
Next, item D, zoning calendar number 2544, which is a site plan approval of Lot 3 at the northwest corner of Bridge Drive and McGaw Road for the McGaw Business Center Overlay District, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Tempest. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Motion is passed and carried.
Next, item E, is an amendment of ordinance 15-0-11, which is zoning calendar number 2446, to allow the reuse of the existing pylon sign at 3110 Belvedere Road, and this is for the Cristo Rey High School, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Taylor. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Motion is passed and carried.
Item F is an ordinance designating 220 Julian Street a historical landmark, a historic landmark, and I so move.
A motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Taylor. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Motion is passed and carried.
Item G, an ordinance designating 650 Grand Avenue a historic landmark, and I so move.
A motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Villalobos. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Mayor, I just would like to add one more thing at the end, then I'll be finished with my report. We also did have a very lively and interesting discussion about our efforts on the Judiciary Committee, and Corporation Council's been working on this for several months, along with his associate, on revamping our liquor code. We're working on rewriting how we issue liquor licenses in the city of Waukegan. I just want to give a lot of credit to this administration. They're taking the liquor code and they're putting the power into the council's hands on the decisions on all liquor licenses going forward. At least that's our hope, in rewriting the code, and we're hoping to get support from the council. We've all been issued with a draft copy of the revamped ordinance. Everyone on the council is encouraged to look this over and share your notes, comments, suggestions with Corporation Council and Mr. Doug Durando, our other attorney. He's somewhere here, I think. The code is important. I think we've had a lot of, we talk about liquor licenses as political capital in this city, and I think this is going to make strides in taking that stigma away from our liquor license process, because as the city council up here, we will make the decision on every single license from here forward. So hopefully, we can, hopefully that puts, makes it feel like the citizens are more in control of how we're issuing and designating liquor licenses, because we're here to listen to you, and then based on what our constituents tell us, we should vote accordingly. And so I just want to share that with the audience, that we did have a discussion tonight, and that this is in the works. So, thank you very much, Mayor.
Well, thank you. Now, I know we did some historical landmarks tonight, and I think the gentleman whose home is in the audience, is he here?
Harry.
Harry's here.
Very capable.
Harry, how you doing? Well, stand up, sir. There you go. Thank you. You know, you do a lot of time and energy, and we really appreciate you. And this is his own homes that he's putting up.
No, no.
All right.
He's been instrumental in that.
My home is already a landmark.
Yes.
But there are three more that I own that are now landmarks.
Well, it is that commitment that is appreciative, not only for myself, the city council, but the citizens of Waukegan. Thank you very much, and thanks for coming out. All right, reports and communications. City of Waukegan Fire Department Pension Fund Actuary Evaluation as of May 1, 2017. Let's get the motion on the floor. Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Bolton. Are there any questions to the motion? Tina, you didn't need to say anything about this, did you? Any?
And you don't need to.
Okay, we don't have to.
This is just a report.
All right, just communications. All right, another to adopt. Same thing for item B, City of Waukegan Police and Fund Actuary Evaluation as of May 1, 2017. We have those official report, are those reports online as well, Tina?
They will be out tonight. They are on Word docs.
Okay.
But I'll put them on the West Side tomorrow.
All right, they'll be available. Thank you, thank you, ma'am. That's a motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Bolton. I don't need to adopt, so I'm doing it for, it's by habit. All right, item C, Treasury Report.
Mayor. Alderman, this is the annual Treasury Report that's required to be filed before November 1st. So I'm pleased now that the art of 2015, 2016 has been completed on time. The required filings that the annual Treasury Report has been filed with the Waukegan City Clerk, the county clerk, and the county treasurer, as well as the state of Illinois. Annual Treasury Report has been printed in the New Sun on 10/30/17 as required. Treasury Report is available to the public without FOIA at the clerk's office, the treasurer's office, and is or will shortly be online on our website. I want to thank the finance director, Tina Smigelinski, and all of her staff, and Joan Westphal, as long as many others. We've had new auditors this year, so we've had a little different setup and format for that, and has gone extremely well, the cooperation we've had from the city. The auditors will be with us next City Council meeting on November the 20th, and I urge the public to come out and hear their presentation. So ends my report, Mayor.
Well, thank you, sir. Appreciate that one. Items 10, with no business there. Item 11, new business. Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Newsom, to approve in the payment dated October 16, 2017, in a total amount of $1,858,228.92. Are there any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman May, to approve the regular payroll dated October 27, 2017, in a total amount of $1,492,103.80. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Item C, motion to approve time bank cash out and longevity payroll dated October 27, 2017, in a total amount of $7,853.24. And that'll be a motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Seager. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Motion is passed and carried. Item D, motion by Alderman Mozio, second by Alderman Seager, to approve outdoor special events. The sponsor has applied under the directive of non-city government use of city-owned buildings and venues. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Motion is passed and carried. Ordinances. Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Velco, authorize a proper city, authorize an appropriation transfer for fiscal year, May 1, 2016, to April 30, 2017. Any questions to the motion?
Can we just get a digested version?
Sure. Obviously, Tina? I knew I'd get you up, I knew I'd get you up here before the night's over with.
So since the audit is complete, as Dr. Schloss did mention, we'll be presenting that at the next City Council meeting, but we have all of our final figures, so we're able to determine where we went a little over, or had savings versus the appropriations. So this is a housekeeping item that we bring forward every year. The total appropriation was $149 million. Total expenditures, and this is all funds, including police and fire pension, capital, general, was $130.5 million. So we were under our total appropriation, but did go over in some funds and add to transfer appropriation between funds in that manner. So again, it's a housekeeping item. Once this is approved, we bring it across the street and file it with the clerk's office across the street, with the original appropriation and any supplemental appropriations. We had two that were approved in the last one.
And do we make that known to the public? What, or is that just in-house?
It's posted on Word docs, and then I also put this ordinance, once it's filed across the street, I have the stamp that it was filed.[1341.01] I put it where we have our annual budgets. I posted there as well. And then, of course, all of the detail is in the audit itself. There's budget actual reports in the capper. That's posted on mine already.
Tina?
Yeah.
Oh, Alderman. When I read the general fund, when I'm looking at that one, am I just showing that we were about a million and a half short of that appropriation, correct?
Right, for the general fund, correct. Okay. Which is our operations. Right, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item B, motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Moseo to approve an ordinance extending the moratorium on approvals for development in the River Road quarter of the city of Waukegan. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item 13, Alderman's time.
Alderman Tempest.
Yes.
Alderman May.
I'll be fast. I'm just, I just want to comment, like, tonight we talked about the video gaming moratorium and we talked about revamping the liquor license. Two really important issues to a lot of people in this city. So I just, once again, just want to commend Corporation Council and Mayor Cunningham's administration for, you know, allowing the council to be highly involved in both of these matters and for taking this head-on and to see that we can do things to improve our city and the future development. So, thank you, that's all I have.
Alderman Valco.
Thank you. For those that know me, you know that I like to give congratulations and a job well done in open forum during Alderman's time. Tonight, I've got a couple of kudos to give out. The first one is about a year, a little over a year ago, I read a newspaper article up here about one of our firms in town called Cornfields at the 3800 block of Sunset. It was started, and I believe around 1885 in the city of Chicago. And then subsequently, about 1893, the family went to the exposition of Chicago. And the fifth generation, maybe the great-granddaughter or the great-great-granddaughter brought the company here to Waukegan. And the firm, Cornfields, they have a creation of GH Creeters. And they make popcorn, and they make caramel corn, and they make all sorts of stuff. And Jane Ferry set something up a couple of weeks ago where the mayor, myself, and Alderman Newsome went to their grand opening of another building on 2400 block of Delaney Road. Now, when they first came here years ago, they started in one section of a building of 100,000 square feet. They subsequently bought the rest of the building on Sunset Avenue for another 108,000 square feet, which was 208,000 total. And now, they just rented half the building on Delaney for another 100,000 square feet. This is a growing Waukegan firm of over 300,000 square feet of warehouse space, and they decided to expand and stay in the city of Waukegan. Now, if you've ever had any of their caramel corn or popcorn or whatever, you know it tastes good. If you haven't, I was told by the new CEO that they are now in Whole Foods, Trader Joe's, and the new Aldi's that is coming into Fountain Square. So, get a hold of some of this. Congratulations to the mayor for being there, to Ms. Ferry. And Mike, I hope you were there. I hope you had a lot to do with this, sir, bringing in the rental or the purchase of the building out there. So congratulations to them and all the city employees that were involved. The second item that I have this evening, and somebody raised their hand if I'm talking too loud, because these are new microphones. The man was here tonight again. And I don't want to blast you like some other people sometimes. The Chicago Trib had an article on the 29th, Sunday, the 29th, and on the front page was "Same Lake, Unequal Rates." And I'm going to, it's going to take a couple of minutes, but it won't be one of these long-winded things that I'm going to be doing here. Lake Michigan water rates have been surging throughout the Chicago region in recent years, squeezing residents and leaving them with little, if any recourse, a Tribune analysis showed. In the end, and I'm skipping paragraphs so it may not flow correctly, in the end, little is stopping local leaders from raising rates even more. Illinois regulators have no oversight authority over towns' water rates. Unlike other utilities such as electricity and natural gas, and unlike other states' policies, Illinois allows the local officials who collect the water revenue to set the rates also. The disparity has emerged even though nearly 80 percent, 80 percent of the Chicago region uses water from the same source, Lake Michigan, one of the world's most bountiful supplies of fresh water. The Great Lakes contain more than 20 percent of the world's total surface freshwater supply and 84 percent of North America's fresh surface water. Lake County. Myself off, huh? Lake County, the world's sixth-largest freshwater lake, is second only in volume to the five Great Lakes. The web of connections can yield a scenario in which a town receives Lake Michigan water after it passes through three or four other communities or providers. Each transition generates a markup. And this is where it gets interesting. And again, I'm skipping paragraphs so it may not flow correctly. Chicago charges suburb A a wholesale rate that works out to be $19.05 per 5,000 gallons. Suburb A sells to suburb B at $24.30. Suburb B charges suburb C $29.90. By the time suburb C sells its water to residents at the rate, it's $54.50. And that suburb puts a surcharge of $33 on the bill, so it's $87.50 per 5,000 gallons of water. Now, Waukegan always gets slam dunk in the paper every time we do something bad. Anytime anything negative happens, it's on, in the paper. Waukegan has actually done something good here. And did they even mention anything about Waukegan? Uh-uh.
No.
They just put it on a graph. The third lowest water rates in the whole region is Waukegan. At $15.55 per 5,000 gallons of water. And I'm going to, I'm not naming suburbs, but I'm going to name the other top two, Highland Park and Evanston. Evanston is at 1371, Highland Park at 14 and change, and us at 1555. So we do do something good here because of, and I hope it continues. Mike Urit, I see you back there, sir. Mike Urit can continue this trend with the help of Brian Anderson, who is our superintendent out at the water plant, with the guidance of the mayor and this council who tries to keep the rates low. I mean, I hear hor, well, you see horror stories, you hear in the paper, but I hear horror stories about how much water the bills are. And just be thankful that we've got our own plant here and you've got a group of nine people plus the mayor that are looking out for it and trying to keep rates low. And that's all I have, sir. Ma'am?
Alderman Taylor. I'm only going to talk very briefly on this topic, but because I have been inundated with phone calls on this matter, I would like to address it a little bit. There have, for any of you who know the subdivision off of River Road and 120 that is under construction, there are currently five homes being built that should be closed on shortly. There has now become propane tanks on the property and not a natural gas line run. So currently, it looks like they will be using propane tanks on property that is a ninth of an acre to heat their homes. This is not confirmed at this point in time, and so I'm telling residents, we don't have this clarified at this point. But because the propane tanks are on the property already, it is, they're causing concern among residents and they are calling constantly. This will be updated as we go forward. We'll have, I'll have more information. I will put it on Facebook when this is clarified, and I'm sure the city will address it at some point in time, but there are a lot of questions about it. So I just want to acknowledge that I'm aware of it, so I have received the tons of phone calls. There's no need to call me about it. It is, we are addressing it, but it is something that we've never seen before in a subdivision, and residents are concerned about it. So that's all I'll say about it at this point. Thank you.
Before you go, Mike, we have a meeting set up for that Thursday, is that correct? We have, Alderman, we have a meeting set up for that Thursday. Obviously, you and I kind of found out about the same time. We immediately made some contacts. Let's get them in here and have a heart-to-heart with them. Sorry. All right? Thank you.
Alderman Bolton.
Yes, I want to openly thank Elroy Reed and Sharon Epps for giving me the opportunity to be on 1220 WRS, just to talk about my goals for the first ward. And then I also will be announcing my first upcoming ward meeting sometime this month. Thank you.
Alderman Seager.
I just want to remind everyone about the leaf pickup. Just rake the leaves to the parkway, not out in the street. Because I'm having problems within the second ward with that. That causes a kind of a mess. And I'm sure some of the other wards also are having this problem. So I'm just reminding everybody throughout all awards, just rake them to the parkway. Thank you.
Alderman Moseo.
Well, thank you. Couple of things. Alderman Valco was right. Need to understand about water. If you look worldwide, water is the most important commodity. It's the most service. It's the one thing you cannot live without. We're fortunate that we are able to generate our own water and provide water. I've always wanted to try to sell more to some of the towns in Lake County that would give us a new revenue stream. We had that discussion a couple of years ago. It's died now, but it may be coming back soon. I had to talk to the mayor about that. Another thing is I accepted a position on the Affordable Housing Corporation of Lake County. This group does some wonderful things. They haven't gotten into Waukegan as much as they'd like to. They're very prominent in Mundeline and Round Lake Beach, and they provide a lot of services, a lot of housing services for people that need help and need some things done. So if anybody's having housing problems, you can contact me and I can get you to them, and they, they can help with a lot of people that are having housing issues and housing problems. They're a wonderful resource, and they do, like I said, I do a lot of, a lot of good things. I think one of the reasons they asked me to be on the board is they want to get into Waukegan more and do some more work in Waukegan to try to help some folks out. So I'm putting that out there. If you're having housing problems, contact me and I'll get you in contact with them. And a couple of other things. We had a group of high school students up here who were celebrated for their accomplishment. We have a lot of students like that at Waukegan High School, a ton of students like that in District 60. Then we also had a gentleman up here talk about a situation coming from school. And this is coming from someone that's been teaching for 29 years. I see this increase, for lack of a better word, of a punk-ass attitude with some of our youth in Waukegan. We have a couple of kids who, it seems like kids now, their only outlet is to be violent. And that violence is not, we've all thrown hands in our lives, at least some of us have. That's just what happens growing up. But kids now are picking up guns and exercising their frustrations and sometimes violent in that matter. We, as a community, we got to recognize that and try to get a handle on it. And it's hard for us up here and maybe for some of us out in the community, there's one avenue that can do it, and that's the school district. They see these kids every day, all day, and I think we need to get a little bit more of a concentration on what is good behavior and what is bad behavior, what's allowed and what's not allowed, and try to help some of these students a little bit better outlet. We got two people sitting, two kids sitting in the county jail that committed crimes with a gun, and I knew at least one of them. The other one I knew a little bit. And we have got to come together and help each other with this. Because if we don't, it's just going to get worse. So many of these kids just do not have any idea, and it's become accepted that it's okay to be violent. It's been accepted that it's okay to have bad behavior. And some of it, I don't know that you can fix. Some of it, I think you might be able to fix, but, you know, you got to understand there's got to be consequences for your actions. And sometimes, those actions become so grave that the consequences, it's already over. They've already committed an act of violence and there's no way out for them. So I've talked to the mayor about this. I've talked a little bit to the chief of police about it. I will try to talk to my bosses at the school district about it and see if we can't come together, because we got to do something. Because if we don't at least try to work on it, in my opinion, it will, it will only get worse, and we'll be dealing with a whole generation of young people. Not a lot of them, but if it's, if it's a small minority of them that are allowed to act like that, they infect everybody. And we have, like I said, my point is, is we have all these students that came up here. Those kids deserve a better community. We all deserve a better community. We can't let a few, you know, ruin it for everybody. Thank you.
Alderman Villalobos.
Yes, first off, I say thank you everyone for being here tonight. It was wonderful to see some new faces. To piggyback a little bit off of Alderman Moseo said, it was wonderful to see these students here. Mayor, I think that's a great thing you just did to recognize our youth. I've been in the council for like just two and a half years, but we need to do more of that, so I wholeheartedly appreciate you that you did that for them. That's going to be one of their moments in their lives, I think. So, I also had the good pleasure of knowing three of the students there, too, three of those cadets. Couple of things, too, to speak upon. For those of you who are fans of storytelling and attending the Waukegan Public Library's annual Ray Bradbury Storytelling Festival, if you were wondering why it didn't happen this year, it did happen, but not in the manner it usually did, or it has in the past, meaning the Waukegan Public Library has decided to focus on introducing storytelling to the youth of the community. So they did the efforts and got sponsorships and donations to fund about 14,000 individuals, the bulk of those being students, over two periods, about a week ago, for the storytelling festival at Genesee Theater. So there was multiple, there was a telling for the daytime for the elementary, or maybe vice versa, middle schoolers and elementary students were able to attend, about 2,000 per session. So Waukegan Public, the Waukegan Public Library did a wonderful job in fundraising to offer this opportunity for those youth and those chaperones and teachers and the bussing for free. That's a big kudos to them. I just want to also mention something about our sale, our pending sale of 13 North Genesee Streets. Michael Adver and Irene Edgar are here. They are part of Waukegan Development Coalition. They are part of the steer, the steerhead of that. In my time working with them, I think they've been doing a wonderful job in trying to promote Waukegan and bring some more development into our community. So to process save, we're going to give you this structure and utilize it. I think it's a good thing. I know they'll do some great work in there. They already have been doing great work in there. If you know 13 North Genesee, that's a building that has the hub on the side of the building there, the tech hub. There's future, we're working on this, too. I'm part of this committee. Been helping out with that, the Ray Bradbury Museum. There's, and it works on that, converting that to the first floor. I might be on the count of the bag on this, but this talk has been going on for a while. The museum won't open up for some time. It's in very stage one of this process, but that's something 13 North Genesee created Waukegan Development Coalition, has helped out with the organization, is get this idea off the ground, start the fundraising. They already hired the people to do the actual curation of the museum, but the museum won't be open for some time, but keep your ears open for that because that's coming down the line. So I think it's a great thing that we've given 13 North Genesee to Ray Waukegan Development Coalition. Recently, too, with all the immigration through our federal government, I was reached out by two individuals that I know to write letters, character witness letters for them. This is the first time where I've really been engaged with immigration to this degree. I am a third-generation U.S. citizen, and to me, immigration seems like a far distant thing, but as I reflected on the people that I know, the people that are near to my, near to my life, they deal, have to deal with immigration and citizen status and everything. And so I was proud that they asked me, and I was proud I was able to use my title and my place in the society as it stands right now to help those individuals out. So if there's anybody else out there that I know, let me know if you need a letter. I'm willing to have you write them. This is, this is one of the reasons why I got into this office, was to help out residents and help out community members. Citizen status, I think, oh, I have a whole other thoughts about that. But the ability to do something like this for an individual, it really makes my heart big or feel great, I don't know, but please, anybody, like, I mean, I think all of us up here should be doing letters like that if we're reached out to by people that we know and constituents, like, we're here to help. I mean, this is our role. So I just want to close up on that. So again, thanks, everyone.
Alderman Newsome.
I will pass.
That concludes Alderman's time.
All right. Real quick, Alderman Moseo, you said something about the kids tonight. One thing we never did say. There are some kids who stand up, and sometimes when they stand up, they get ridiculed, they get bullied, get talked about. But we never tell those kids who do stand up that we're proud of you. We never tell those kids that we're sorry that you're going through this at this early age, that some of us probably don't get a chance to go through to them when we're adults. For any, your son is one of those kids, one of those kids. He stood up. He stood up and did the right thing. Told his parent. Parent then came and talked to the, to the adults and to the administrators and to the city and to the school district. That kid did the right thing. Ladies and gentlemen, it's okay for our kids to do the right thing. We must support them when they do the right thing to try to change the behavior of others. But your kid did the right, he's a young man. He did the right thing. It was tough for him, but his dad, his mom, and I know his grandma over there, she's ready to go. And the rest of us, they did the right thing. So Alderman Moseo, thank you for bringing that to our attention, and myself, the chief, and others. I'm going to be doing some walkthroughs of some of our middle school and high schools, both of the high schools, unannounced, just to show that it's okay. There's good kids in our community, and we got to have their backs. Thank you. Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Tempest to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried.